The Steamship Authority is a proud partner in many Falmouth community events, including town meeting coverage, and for good reason. Not only do we have a terminal and offices here, about one-third of our employees call Falmouth their home. We always work hard to serve our neighbors, friends, and the traveling public. We recently put seven new electric buses into service at our Falmouth parking lots. Soon we'll be adding new vessels to our fleet, continuing work on our energy-efficient wood-sol terminal buildings, and adding solar panels at our largest parking lot. At the Steamship Authority, we're serving the islands and you.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of Internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Good evening, and welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, April 28, 2025, and it is exactly 6:30. And I would ask you all, please, to silence your cellphones and double-check that they are indeed silenced. And if you are making an audio or video recording of this public meeting, please notify me as the chair. And the placement and operation of this recording equipment should not interfere with the conduct of this meeting. Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does the board have any recognitions tonight?
Uh, I do-
Ms. Goldstone, I'm going to start with you, and then Mr. Muscala.
Um, I would like to recognize the 250th Anniversary Committee, including their liaison, member Muscala, museums on the green, Reverend Angelie Drury, Greg Mills, the Concord Militia, and the Kaboo Jazz Duo, plus a number of Falmouth Public Schools students who participated in yesterday's Lanterns and Lyrics event. It was a, the whole day of events was a fabulous kickoff to the 250th anniversary. I learned some history, I enjoyed some music, despite the weather. It was, it was fabulous, so, great job to everyone involved.
Uh, yeah, thank you. I mean, just to echo what Ms. Goldstone said, special shout-out to the 250 Committee itself: Bob Ripley, Karen Ronaldo, Sandy Solz, Catherine Bumpus, Rachel Lovett, and, and Peter French. They've been meeting regularly, every two weeks, and yesterday's event and celebration was a culmination of those meetings, and more will come. So, they all deserve our gratitude for, for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, did you have something?
Nothing.
Okay. Any other recognitions? Okay, we'll move into announcements. Any announcements from the board for the public? Ms. Goldstone?
Uh, I will start, just making sure I've got my dates right. Um, I would love to share with the public the Opal Lee Walk on May 17th, which is going to be a really great community event to, kind of a preface to this year's Juneteenth celebrations, a two-and-a-half-mile community walk to celebrate, to recognize the two-and-a-half years between the Emancipation Proclamation and the actual freeing of the final enslaved people in this country. Um, so that's a great event. And then that evening is the Falmouth High Prom and After Prom, which is a true community event. They are always still looking for volunteers, so, take a look at that if you have any time and ability to, to help out with a great event that keeps our high school juniors and seniors safe after prom.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move into public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Okay, public comment may be made on routine matters on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on this agenda, the Select Board may not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Please introduce yourself, sir.
Craig Martin, precinct nine, Falmouth High School, class of 80. Um, I just, I, the subject was brought up a few meetings ago, and I thought, and it's been well-talked about on my dog walks, I have a couple of dogs, about the proposed off-leash areas. Um, my dogs, I just, I'm just, I'm filled with salt and sand right now, I'm just coming off Chapacote with my two dogs now, and they do enjoy freedom and what have you. But I recognize the need for a leash law, and I read it in a letter from the last enterprise from an appointed Falmouth official who gave some reasons for maintaining the leash law, but I have different reasons. Um, I know it was brought up at the meeting, someone, one of the board members did say, "What about liability?" I don't know if there's any case law about liability, but it makes sense that, that there might be liability. But what I'm more concerned about is, um, you're going to get, you're going to get the troublemaker with the bothersome dog, and I don't see him, but I know they are out there. Um, and you want to have the animal control be able to say, "Leash him up," or else. If there's no leash law, in effect, he doesn't have to leash him up. He could be a bother. Um, and I'm just saying, this gives more, um, or more substance to the animal control's right to tell the guy to leash him up. So I really think, beyond that, it'll be a bureaucratic nightmare, trying to maintain order of who's got the, who's got the permits and who doesn't on, on the location, and then parochial fights in town. How come the leash, how come the dogs are off-leash in my neighborhood and not elsewhere? Or, how come we don't have an unleashed area in my neighborhood? It'll just be a bureaucratic nightmare. So there's no good reasons for such. The system works now, as is, and there are no, I've checked with the animal control, and I've done, I did this a dozen years ago when BB Woods was the subject, there are no reports of animal, uh, uh, animal injuries or people injuries to this, despite the anecdotes that sometimes you see in a letter to the paper. There is no evidence of such. So, um, it works as it is now, and I, and I hope that you leave it as such.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our committee interviews. The first interview we have is for the Veterans Council Committee, Brian Callanan. Is Brian here? Come up to the podium, please, sir. Is there anything that you would like the board to know about you that is not in your application?
Uh, no, I think it's complete.
Okay. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments about Mr. Callanan's? Yes, Ms. Goldstone?
I'm just curious, why now?
Uh, it's a good question, and I don't have an adequate answer for it. Finally waking up, slow learner.
Mr. Muscala?
Just a question, have you been to any of the meetings?
Yes, I've been to a couple of them so far, and, uh, I think that I can contribute somewhat to them.
Any kind of good ideas that you think, you know-
Yes, I do, but I'd rather float them by them first before they surface in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd make a motion to appoint Brian Callanan to the Veterans Council Committee.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I make an announcement real quickly?
Yes.
Folks in the doorway, if you could come in, there's some seats over here on the far side, we just can't have anybody blocking the entrance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Entsha. Next, we'll move into the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee, Jim Newman. And, Mr. Newman, I'll ask you the same question. Is there anything that you would like the board to know about you that is not in your application?
I don't think so, thank you.
Okay. Questions or comments for Mr. Newman? Ms. Goldstone?
You may decline to answer on the same grounds as the, the last applicant, but I'm curious, um, what you see as particularly pressing needs in the area of DEIB at the moment?
I'm hoping to get educated on that. Um, I, I would be maybe speaking out of school to really speculate. Um, I think that committee is searching for a bit of a direction, from what I've seen. Hopefully I can contribute to that, and sort of contribute just to keeping the committee organized, and I can add some diversity, which is nice.
Excellent.
I think we're all familiar with Mr. Newman's many, uh, community activities, and I, for one, think he'd be a, a, a great addition to the, uh, DEIB committee.
Is that a motion, Mr. Muscala?
Happy to make it, unless someone else would like to.
Uh, sure. Um, I move appointment of Jim Newman to the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Madam Chair, could we just specify the, the date of appointment?
Thank you.
So it's through June, just had it, uh, June 30, 2027.
And that's a good reminder, if you're going to make the motion, please read the motion that is in your packet.
I would just comment that I've known Mr. Newman for several years, and I'm sure he'll do a fine job on this committee.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Okay, Short Term Rental Advisory Committee. Mr. Gessen is not able to be here. Um, he, his flight, he was coming back from Portugal, and his flight got delayed, so unfortunately he cannot make it. So we will interview the other candidates, and then have a conversation about how we move forward. So could we start with Kara Foley? Is Kara here? Okay, Mr. Crane. Good evening. Is there anything in your, uh, you would like the board to know that is not included in your application?
Thank you, no, Madam Chair.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board?
I would comment that Mr. Crane was very involved with the, uh, previous working group, and shared a lot of thoughts and comments, and, uh, I think you attended all the meetings, am I right about that?
Uh, some of them, I can't say all, Mr. Crane.
Okay. Anything that you would like to say to us?
I think you all should know me a bit by now, when I submitted, I think, a good application. I hope you'll select me.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Elizabeth Klein. Is there anything you would like us to know that is not included in your application?
Well, I think you've all gotten to know me, like Mr. Crane, through the work of the, um, the working group, through the planning board. Um, I think I've shown that I'm willing to do legwork in between, and I'd just like to mention that again, that I'm, I'm willing to use personal time to do research, make phone calls, and try and connect with other communities. But I recognize that there's a nice list of, of applicants, and so if I'm not selected, I do plan on still participating as a member of the public, um, to stay engaged in the issue. So thanks for your time.
Great. Any questions or comments? Ms. Goldstone?
Ms. Klein, you mentioned research that you've been doing, both as a member of the Affordable Housing Committee and, and on your own. Can you just share a little bit of what that, that research has been about and what you've been finding?
Sure. Um, so the, when the planning group, or the, the working group started meeting last year, for example, I provided a list of what other communities on Cape are doing as far as any regulations related to short-term rentals. Um, I got that information by going onto town websites, and when I couldn't discern from the town website, because sometimes town websites are not super easy to navigate, um, I was willing to get on the phone and call and talk to, um, town planners or town managers, um, about the work that they were doing in their community, um, read through the housing production plan multiple times, uh, have done things like other research that Province Town has done through the Donahue Institute, um, and, uh, I, I've continued to follow and keep abreast of, of short-term rental-related changes on Cape Cod specifically.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the applicant?
I would comment similarly that Ms. Klein was very active participant with the working group, and her, her information was very helpful, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anne Pride? Is Anne Pride here? Okay, Kelly McKeon?
Hi. Um, I suppose this was in my application, but I will just reiterate that I have been renting in Falmouth for, since 2016, and I've lived in over a dozen rentals in town, and in that time, I've seen a lot of year-round-
Could you speak a little bit louder?
Oh, am I not, is it, is that better?
I just can't hear you.
Is it on?
Is it not on?
It's on.
Is that, okay.
There you go.
Okay, um, I've been renting in Falmouth since 2016, in that time, I've lived in over a dozen different houses. In my time, I've seen a lot of year-round rentals become short-term rentals at the expense of year-round housing, and I just think it will be important to approach short-term rentals with the perspective of how it affects our year-round housing supply. And for that reason, I think it's important that a renter, um, be on this committee. But I'll echo what Liz said, there's some good applicants, and if I am not selected, I think I will remain engaged, um, in the public comment process.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Brown?
I was curious, I don't recall, did, you did attend some of the meetings?
I attended the first one only.
That's right, you said that in your-
Um, but I had work commitments at the other, uh, times.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Charles McCaffrey? Okay, so this is interesting, we, um-
Do these folks respond to the invitation?
And they all said they'd be here.
We did confirm their attendance, yes.
Thank you.
With the exception, as you noted, Madam Chair, of Mr. Gessen, who's unavailable.
So we have had the ability to interview three people. We've had one, two, three, four, who are on our list, who are not here.
And we need one as a Realtor, so if the one Realtor has not shown up as well-
Correct.
That's a requirement of the committee.
Could we maybe table this, in case they show up late? Maybe they thought it was supposed to start at seven, like the old time, and just didn't pay attention to the-
I have a question, though. If we proceed and decide, you know, at least two, the two at barge, assuming no one else shows, can the committee get up and running even though it's not fully? We cannot.
Madam Chair, I'd feel more comfortable, um, tabling this until we're able to offer an opportunity for, for Mr. Gessen to interview, given that his, he was, he planned to be here and is unable to.
I would, I would disagree, only in that he can't do a phone or video on May 5th, based on the open-meeting law, and that would push us off until the 20th. And I think that's a long time to wait to get this committee together, to get started.
Just one, the 19th, actually.
19, correct.
I, I agree with the chair, as, as much as I'd be very anxious to hear Mr. Gessen, I know of his, you know, involvement in the, in the community, and he's, you know, on the Assembly delegates, and has been, you know, pushing for housing, uh, solutions here in the county. Uh, I don't think we can wait, I'm sorry that we can't, you know, fully staff it, staff it this evening, but, uh, at the very least, I hope we can at, at our next meeting on May 5th.
Or perhaps this evening, if my guess might be correct, that other folks might come a little later, if we could return to the item.
We can certainly, uh, put it off to see if other people show up. Um, we can give it some time. I, I just, there are people-
Seems surprising that so many people don't show up.
That's, that's my concern, but the other thing is, we do have people that did show up, and did show up on time to be interviewed. So that's the other, um, side of the coin. Go ahead.
If we do put this off to May 5th, we won't need those people to come back, is that, that's correct?
No, exactly, exactly.
Just so they know.
Yes. So I guess the question is-
We're looking for-
Hold on one second, I guess what I heard you say, correct me if I'm wrong, could we hold off until later in this meeting? Am I correct?
That was my first suggestion.
Okay, so why don't we start with that, and see if the, some of the people, McCaffrey, Foley, Pride, let's see if they show up. If not, I, I think, you know, we, we might want to move to at least appoint two tonight, if that sounds fair to the board. Okay, so we can hold on that, um, for a little bit? Yes, Mr. Zlinski?
I certainly wouldn't hold the people that were here. You know, they shouldn't have to wait here.
I agree.
You know, they were here on time, so, I mean, they can be voted in an abstention, right?
They don't have to be here.
Sure.
I mean, it's unfair to keep these people here that have already been here.
Correct. The, the board's policy just says that the candidates need to be interviewed, so they have been interviewed, and-
And your chances are jeopardized if you leave and you've already been interviewed.
Right, not at all.
At least not by me.
Not at all. Okay, so we will move on, and we will hold our vote to see if some other candidates show up. Um, and I do do that just a bit begrudgingly because of the candidates who did show up on time and were ready for their interviews. So we can move on to public hearings, and our first public hearing, Mr. Zlinski, for the notice, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In accordance to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 87, Sections 3 and 4, a public hearing will be held on Monday, April 28, 2025, at 6:45 PM. The Selectman's Meeting Office at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. to consider the removal of the following public trees. Location, Quaker Road opposite Highland Ave. Removal of two trees, a red oak and a pitch pine, sized at 16-inch and 11-and-a-half inches. Reasoning. Trees will impact sightline of new parking lot being built for the 300 Committee. These trees identified above have been posted for public inspection. Any objections to their removal must be submitted in writing to the tree warden prior to or during the hearing. The mailing address for the tree warden is Department of Public Works, Town of Falmouth, 416 Griffith Street, Falmouth, Mass., 02540. Email, jeremiah.pierson@falmouthma.gov. Phone number, 508-457-2543, extension 3008.
Mr. Pearson, welcome.
Good evening, Jeremiah Pearson, tree warden for the Town of Falmouth.
Raise that mic up just a hair, perfect.
Is this better?
You're tall.
Yeah. So these two trees have been identified as problematic trees for sightline issues, uh, when the engineer went out to set up plot plan for the upcoming parking lot for the 300 Committee. Both trees are border trees from the woodland, and they've been extremely cut back due to extensive utility line clearance, so they're pretty much just sticks. Um, I'm, my opinion would be to remove the trees and have two new trees planted in a better spot on County Road.
Questions from the board? Mr. Muscala?
What would be the maturity of the trees that would be planted, or, and-
Uh, I'm sorry. The tree sizes use between two- and two-and-a-half-inch caliber trees, so they're about seven feet tall, their exact age, they're, they're young trees, but, uh, putting in very large caliber trees is also hard to manage because of the watering needs.
Ms. Goldstone? Understanding those constraints, um, would it be possible to do a two-to-one, um, planting two trees for each tree that's cut down, given that the ones that will be planted will be much smaller?
Yes, that could, that could happen, yes. Two trees per each tree, so four trees total, yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Zlinski?
So, your testimony is that they do, they do, you consider them a public safety hazard the way they stand up?
Um, well, the engineer identified them as a public safety hazard for sightline issues, so, so yes.
That's all.
Any other questions from the board, comments? Any comments from the public regarding this hearing? Yes, sir. You need to come up to the podium, please, and introduce yourself?
Hello, uh, my name's Raymond Glass, I live on Quaker Road at 702, uh, pretty close to where the parking lot is going to be. Uh, myself and other neighbors have gone up and down Quaker Road, I know the stretch well. I'm not against taking those particular trees down, but I really don't think they'll do anything, it'll do anything to improve the sightlines. There's a hill, a rise, excuse me, a little out of breath. There's a rise in earth, uh, that I think would do, that's probably going to do more in terms of obstructing the parking lot entrance or exit, uh, as opposed to these trees. That's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board?
I, to, to the point that I think Mr. Muscala began, um, you know, I think we have a practice of, uh, cutting mature trees, and then thinking that a much smaller tree is a one-to-one replacement, um, when in fact, that, that's just biologically, physically not the case, and so I would like to, to ask for, um, that two-to-one, uh, planting of replacement trees in, in this case.
Would agree with that.
That's a good suggestion.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
About the sightlines, are there other concerns about the sightlines from?
Jessica Whitnour is here from the 300 Committee, I don't know if she can speak on that one.
Hi, thank you, Jeremiah, and thank you, uh, for scheduling this hearing for this evening. The 300 Committee Land Trust, I should introduce myself first. Jessica Whitnour, Executive Director of the 300 Committee Land Trust. Our board member, Leonard Johnson, is with us, and Consultant Catherine Garofoli from the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts. Tom Bunker of BSS Design was the consultant hired by the 300 Committee. The scope of work that we gave to Tom Bunker was to evaluate the Quaker Road frontage of the land that the 300 Committee was acquiring through the Community Preservation and the Land Grant. The two items, public safety, number one consideration, knowing that this site would become a publicly accessible trailhead for, as part of the 300 Committee's land holdings. So his task was to identify along the frontage the best location for public safety of vehicles entering and exiting, and minimizing natural resource disturbance. So that was the sweet spot. Tom conducted the calculations, of course, provided all of that information to the DPW Engineering Division when we submitted the driveway permit, and my understanding is that, uh, you know, the, the site visit that the DPW Engineering Division conducted identified these two trees. But the permit approval process from the Engineering Division did include that, the review of, of all of Tom Bunker's information and, and the site distance plan. And that was a, certainly a concern for the 300 Committee, wanting to ensure that, uh, you know, public safety is, is a number-one priority.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I would move approval of the removal of one pitch pine and one red oak, uh, as the trees will impact the sightline of the new parking lot construction on Quaker Road opposite Highland Ave, with an amendment to the proposal to plant, uh, four trees, replacement on, in another location along County Road.
Okay, and I would second that motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Zlinski, for the second hearing, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In accordance to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 87, Sections 3 and 4, public hearing will be held on Monday, April 28, 2025, at 6:45 PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. Consider the removal of the following public trees. Location, 780 Main Street. Removal of five little-leaf lindens. Sizes, 22-inch, a 17-inch, a 16-inch, a 16, uh, I'm sorry, 16-and-a-half, and another 16-and-a-half. Reasons, Scranton and Main Intersection Widening Project. The trees identified above have been posted for public inspection. Any obstruction, uh, any objections to their removal must be submitted in writing to the tree warden prior to the, or during the hearing. The mailing address for the tree warden is Department of Public Works- The mailing address for the tree warden is Department of Public Works, Falmouth, Mass. 416 Gifford Street, Falmouth, Mass. 02540. Email jeremiah.pierson@falmouthma.gov. Phone number 508-457-2543, extension 3008.
Thank you, Mr. Zelinski. Mr. Pearson?
Hello again. Yeah, so, all these trees, their root systems have been deeply impacted by all the construction that's been going on, on that project. I feel that, that the trees will be unstable and removing these trees would allow us to replant big trees and we're going to be making that whole area more aesthetically pleasing with the new wall. We're going to be planting ornamental trees and eventually we'll be putting up banners there for town banners. So it will be, it will be a more aesthetic area, but I do feel like the trees are compromised because of the loss of roots.
Questions from the Board? Mr. Muscala?
And, and the town will be responsible for planting and paying for these?
Yes, correct.
I'm just curious, that this wasn't considered when everything was approved with respect to the widening and what's going on there, that we were going to lose these trees?
Well, these trees are not in the town right of way.
Right.
They are public trees and there was some misunderstanding of, I, I consider these still, you know, something would need a sheetroo hearing, but other people did not, those misunderstanding.
Fiona, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Goldstone?
I understand the proposal is to replant smaller ornamental trees in this location.
That's correct.
Does the town have another location? I mean, we're losing really significant 50-foot tall mature trees that are a pollinator resource as well as the carbon that they're, they're currently storing. I would like to see some sort of replanting plan to make up for some of that in addition to the ornamental trees that would be put in that location.
I could give you that. We do, we replanted probably seven trees just this week. We plant about 80 trees a year, so we try to keep up with this the best we can. Obviously, resources is a big, big part of that because my, the tree department is, is very busy. But yes, I, I could, we could do supplemental plantings beyond the five that's going to be replaced.
Any other questions or comments? Any comments on this application from the public? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Discussion amongst the Board?
Once, once again, remember Goldstone keeps, you know, our feet to the fire with respect to replanting and making things better. So certainly think the suggestions and as agreed to by Jeremiah is a, is a good plan and I would move the approval.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
How close is the wall? These are pictures from before. How close is the wall to the actual tree canopy?
It's within the drip line. Some, some of it's about a foot.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So all of their roots have been drastically impacted.
Okay.
I think the wall that they put up looks great, by the way.
So to clarify, I would move that we approve the application of the town engineer for the removal of five little leaf linden trees to accommodate the project to widen the intersection at Scranton Ave and Main Street.
Okay, so you have read the official motion and did we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Ms. Goldstone?
I would like to see the motion amended to include supplemental plantings to account for the carbon and pollinator resources lost with these trees.
Okay, so we have an amended motion. Do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Okay, we have an amended motion and we have a second. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into our third hearing. Mr. Zelinski, for the notice, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, 183 Alpha of the General Laws as amended by Chapter 299 of the Acts of 1926 and amendments thereto that McGansett Circle Incorporated doing business as Daily Brew located at 412 North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, Mass. has applied for an entertainment license and a Sunday entertainment license. A hearing on the above application will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, April 28th, 2025 at 6:45 PM. Comments may be sent to the, to Select Board at falmouthma.gov per order of the Select Board Licensing Board. Nancy Robbins Taylor, Edwin P. Zelinski II, Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. Muscala, Heather M. H. Goldstone.
Thank you, Mr. Zelinski. Attorney Clawor, are you here to represent the applicant?
I am, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clawor. I'm an attorney here in town and I'm before you this evening representing...
Can you speak up, Kevin, a little bit?
Of course. I try not to lean too into it because that's going to reverberate too much, but, again, for the record, Kevin Clawor, I'm an attorney here in town and I'm before you this evening representing John and Kathy Hickey, who are the members of McGansett Circle LLC and the owners of the Daily Brew. We are before you seeking a common victoria license and an entertainment license for the location at 412 North Falmouth Highway. Understandings are two separate matters, so we'll be addressing the entertainment license first. It is perhaps the worst kept secret in town that the Daily Brew is intending to purchase the Silver Lounge location, which has recently ceased operations. Daily Brew is a coffee shop and restaurant serving primarily breakfast and lunch. They are applying for an entertainment license because their intent is to have one or two musicians providing entertainment, indoor entertainment only, as presently occurs at their Katomet location. I should note that the Katomet location will be closed and the entirety of the operation will be relocated to the 412 North Falmouth Highway.
Can I ask one quick question? Did I hear you say indoor entertainment only?
Yes, we're not requesting outdoor entertainment.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yep. So the hours do run from 10:00 AM until 10:00 PM because they do intend to hold some occasional special events or dinner services, but the primary purpose of this is as a breakfast and lunch and coffee shop. It's my understanding that the Silver Lounge has held entertainment license in this location for many years and has been the site of a restaurant since 1938. I believe all the other information that the Board needs is included in the application package. However, I would be glad to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Questions from the Board?
Yeah, just to clarify the, the hours of operation because it seems like the application says 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM. But you just said 10:00 PM.
So realistically, anytime you apply for an application, an entertainment license, you typically go a little beyond when you intend to actually operate. Their, their, their primary purpose here is as a breakfast and lunch location. However, they, they, they do intend to do some special events or occasional dinner services, so they'd like to have the ability to go into the evening as needed.
Evening is one thing, 12:00 AM is, is completely other situation.
Yeah.
I'm going to go to Mr. Zelinski and I'll come back to Mr. Brown.
Claw, can you refresh my memory? Let's get ample parking there. How many parking spaces are there?
About 80, I believe, no, more than 80. I can tell you in a second. We have in the plans, I believe it is... No, it's about 80 parking spaces that are located there, yeah.
This business does cater quite a bit to the, the military people out at Otis, too. You anticipate their patronage as well?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Even though we're moving just across the line?
Yeah, I mean, I just think the location of this coming into Falmouth, one, coming into Falmouth is a great thing. Two, I think it is something that the town needs, certainly in that area of town. And, and three, I think it provides a service that we don't really have and, and will, will draw from a, a number of different places, but we have, as you've noted, Mr. Zelinski, ample parking at this location. We're not changing the exterior, we're not changing the parking lot, we're not changing the footprint of the building. There will be some upgrades to the interior, but otherwise it's going to, you know, be very much as has operated for almost 100 years.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Brown?
And just wanted to get a little better sense of the nature of the entertainment. Will this be like a function room in the evening? Is that the idea?
So it's, there was a dining room where a few tables can be relocated to accommodate entertainment space. What we're talking about realistically, for the most part, will be one or two musicians. The application states one to three, but i-if you're having a breakfast, lunch, coffee shop, it's, it's one to two people for the most part.
Yeah, I'm just curious about the need for the 12 o'clock entertainment time. If you're not serving dinner, what, what kind of entertainment?
So there's a number of, there's a number of businesses in town that don't necessarily operate in the evening all the time, but have entertainment license that go into the evening to 11 or 12:00 PM because periodically they do host events. So I think that what they're trying to do here is, you know, there could be a rehearsal dinner there one, one evening and you could take that dining room and make it more of a function space where you'd have a few musicians playing. There, there could be any number of private events that could be done there, but they're not intending to operate this as a, as a kuna mesedan where you, where the primary purpose is, is function space. It's just something else to supplement the business.
Okay.
I'm going to go to Mr. Muscala and then Ms. Goldstone.
Yeah, again, I hate to be a stickler with the hours, but actually the license that's part of the application says Sundays, 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM, which would seem to be inconsistent with what, what, what you've said before. I just want to point that out and that's kind of where my questions were coming from.
That would be an error in the...
I just want to make sure it's right so that we know what, what's going to be going on there. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Muscala. Ms. Goldstone?
Yeah, I'll just say, as a fan of Daily Brew where it currently is, that I'm excited to see the, the opportunity for their expansion and, and to see someone else moving into this iconic space. And I think the ability to, to have some music, as they've had both at the Silver and at Daily Brew in, in the past is, is a reasonable request.
I would agree with you. Any other questions or comments from the Board?
I'm just, I know that the town, if I may, I know that the town and other spots have, have been thirsting, pardon the pun, for, for something like this, a little more cultural, a little more folksy. And I was big on the parking thing, the safety aspect of it, being able to house all the cars and all this and the, and the function area is big enough to do just that. So I think, I really like the idea, I'd say.
What about the store?
The store, that's where the dining room will be.
Okay.
Yeah, the dining room's expanding into the store.
Okay.
They are keeping the caboose though.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? Any comments from the public on this application? Yes. I will get to you as well, sir.
Okay.
Let her go first?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Nancy Weiner Bisounary. I'm Bill Unley Weiner's daughter, the owners back in the day of the Silver Lounge Restaurant. I do have property at 6 Winslow Road, which abuts the Silver Lounge. I think that my question was the same as yours, was parking. I didn't know what kind of venue they were going to have and I had heard that it was going to be Uncle Bill's Country Store where they would have some entertainment, which my parents would greatly appreciate. They were big into music and so I think this town definitely needs that. But my only question is, once again, the parking situation with the people that live down Winslow Road, will that affect them if it gets too big? And if it is just two or three people, then it won't be. But if you were going to have a venue that has, for weddings or things like that, then there would be a problem. So that's the only issue I see. So I think they would have to talk to their abutters, the businesses, to see if they could use their parking lots when they do do that, if that's a possibility. So that's the only issue I see. But other than that, I am very pleased that the Silver Lounge will stay and my parents would be too. And I wish the owners all the best at the Daily Brew. So I think it will be a great addition. So, thank you very much.
Great. Mr. Clawor, do you want to address any of those concerns or you want to wait until we get all the public comment? Sir? Yes, please.
Do you need my name to add to it?
Yeah, I just need your name.
Patrick Bennett, 27 Winslow Road. What hours do you intend to have the entertainment?
Sir, please, sir, please address the Board.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You address your concerns to the Board and then we'll give Mr. Clawor an opportunity to answer them, okay?
Actually, how many days of the week will you be having entertainment? What, is it just Saturday and Sunday or throughout the whole week?
Okay, do you have another question and then I'll ask him to come up and answer all of them?
Are there any plans for outdoor entertainment?
Okay.
And then you did answer the, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So could you address the questions? You can have a seat, sir, about the parking in case there is a big event? How many days a week for entertainment and is there any plan for outdoor entertainment? I think I represented the three questions.
In, in reverse order, I guess. There is no plan for outdoor entertainment.
Okay.
And to the extent that they wanted to have outdoor entertainment, they'd have to come back before this Board, but we're not requesting that at this time with no real intent to do so, moving forward. The hours of operation, this will generally be, you know, early afternoon into, into mid-afternoon. Again, we have the, we're looking to have the ability to have the occasional evening event or special event or function. That is not the primary purpose of this establishment. It is to serve as a coffee shop, small restaurant. And the days, we've requested, you know, we've requested a seven-day license. This is indoor entertainment that, you know, the town has very specific rules about amplification and where noise can be heard. And if there was an issue, it can be brought before this Board and we have to come back to renew this on a yearly basis anyways. So, you know, in the, in the summertime, I think you'd have entertainment more days than not. In the winter, probably not nearly as much. It doesn't make sense to have someone playing on a Tuesday in February, but it probably, it very well might make sense to have someone playing on a Tuesday in July.
And just the parking issue, if there were to be a, a really big event?
So our capacity is limited by, part of what limits our capacity is parking. And we have a specific capacity number that is set. It's on the plans. My, my plans that are in front of me are just a little bit too small. I have a, I have a, a flash drive I can pull up if need be. But, you know, when we go through this process with the Building Department, they look at how many seats are proposed. That dictates the parking and our, our occupancy is tied to that. And if we exceed that, we have other problems. If, in the event that there was an event that drew more, I mean, we, we have a capacity of 200. So, and we have almost 80 parking spaces. Generally speaking, it's two seats per parking space is the parking requirement. So I think that we have more than enough parking for the available occupancy.
Okay, great. Mr. Brown?
Outside of these unique events that you mentioned, what would be the normal operating hours of the business?
You know, it would likely go into the early evening, four, five, six.
Any other comments on this application from the public? You have another one?
I don't have one.
Okay, come on up. Take one more comment.
Now, I just want to say I grew up in this town and we used to have a lot of entertainment. And I would love to see that come back. And I think that they have proven that that's what they want to do and I think they would be respectful. I don't know this couple, but I think it's a definite plus for the town.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Madam Chair?
Okay, discussion amongst the Board. Mr. Zelinski?
There's no discussion. I'll make, I'll move the motion.
Let me just, is there any discussion?
No, I think we've heard it enough.
Okay.
Madam Chair, fellow Board members, I'd make a, a motion to approve the application submitted by McGansett Circle Incorporated doing business as Daily Brew.
I would second that motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Seeing none?
Madam Chair, excuse me, sir.
Yes.
Given the inconsistencies that Mr. Muscala found in the license, do we need to clarify the hours of that entertainment license?
I think we should amend them.
So 10:00 AM till midnight, Monday through Saturday, and 11:00 AM through midnight, Sunday?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll accept Ms. Goldstone's amendment to my motion.
Amendments? Okay, and I will second the motion. Any further discussion amongst the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, thank you.
I'm still the next one, too.
I know.
Well, we're not there yet.
Do you think you're going to keep up the old wooden sign over there?
I, I don't, I haven't gotten into that level of detail, but I, we can ask.
Kind of a unique little landmark feature.
Okay, we're going to move into business. Consider a vote to approve an application.
I'll take the sign. Thank you very much. Please don't take it to the dump. You will, please don't.
Consider a vote to approve an application submitted by McGansett Circle Inc. doing business as the Daily Brew for a common victoria license to be exercised at 412 North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth. Does the Board have any questions regarding this application?
Just to clarify, though, the hours for this are...
Just to clarify, though, the hours for this are 6 a.m. to 11 p.m.?
Yeah, you know, realistically, you stop food service well before close.
Okay, just again, that's what the application says.
In case somebody wants one last cup of coffee, right.
And 6 o'clock, 6 a.m.
To 11 p.m.
That's the coffee. I only care about the morning, Ms. Muscally. I don't care about the other stuff. 6 o'clock, I need my coffee.
I've already had three cups by then.
Any questions regarding this application? Okay, this is not a hearing, so we do not take public comment on this. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the applications by McGansett Circle Inc., doing business as Daily Brew for a common license as presented tonight.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Good luck with the new business.
Thank you all very much. We really appreciate your time.
Love it. Okay, we're gonna move on. Consider to vote, vote to approve an application submitted by the Seaco Shores Association for a change of manager of its all-alcoholic beverages seasonal club license to be exercised at 7 Fairview Lane, East Falmouth. Mr. Renshaw, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Seaco Shore Association is a seasonal.
Folks? Folks, we need to move on. Thank you, Mr. Clawer. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair. The association is a seasonal all-alcoholic beverages club licensed to operate from April through November 30th, from 8 a.m. to 12 midnight, with Sunday hours from 10 a.m. to 12 midnight. Seating capacity for 127 guests. The club, as you know, also has entertainment and Sunday entertainment licenses. A complete application was received in the select board office on March 27th of this year. A town of Falmouth background check was completed on March 12th. The proposed manager listed several years of restaurant management experience on the application. And upon review of the application, there were no objections found by the police, fire, rescue department, or the health departments. Madam Chair, it's my recommendation that the select board approve the application by Seaco Shores Association for a change of manager for its all-alcoholic beverages seasonal club license.
Questions or comments from the board? Go ahead, Mr. Muscally.
Do we have a complete application? Because all I see with respect to this manager, as employment information starts May 24 to 1/25, and another one, 5/22 to 1/24. Is there more than that that's attached, or is that it? Just want to clarify.
Madam Chair, select board member Muscally, the materials they have in your application are complete. That was what was submitted to the select board office.
Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone here from the Seaco Shores Association? Yes, just in case. And maybe to answer your question, Mr. Muscally.
Hi, my name is Kate Sampson.
Welcome.
Can you just expand a little bit on your past experience?
Of course, yes. I actually held a liquor license in Mashpee. I used to run the Pompano's at Raw Bar for years. I opened up both the Estias. I started in Mashpee, and then I went to Falmouth Estia. I worked for, I changed over the Wharf in Falmouth that used to be Sopranos. And then someone else bought the building, so I decided to go for something more, you know, where there wasn't an end date. And Seaco Shores approached me, and I took it on.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Are you the tip certified?
I'm all the certified, yes.
Okay, I just didn't see that in here.
Am I correct that this is not open to the public?
It's not open to the public.
It's just for members?
Yes, members only.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments of the applicant? Okay, we'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the application for a change of manager of a seasonal all-alcoholic beverages club license, Seaco Shores Association, 7 Fairview Lane, East Falmouth, as presented.
Second, Ms. Goldstone's motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to C. Do we have a PowerPoint from you, Attorney Moynihan?
Yes, ma'am.
Was it submitted?
Yes, it was, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Attorney Moynihan is setting up, I'll just go through an overview of the project. As you all know, the project is located at 419 Oquaid Highway and comprises a total of 3.8 acres. The project is a collaborative effort with the 300 Committee Land Trust, Falmouth Housing Trust, and the Massachusetts Department of Recreation. Lot 1 of the project site is approximately 1.1 acres. And the trust plans to construct five single-family homes for homeownership. Of those five homes, two will be deed restricted at 80% of the area made in income, or AMI. One home will be deed restricted at 100% of the AMI, and two homes will be deed restricted at 120% of the AMI, all in perpetuity. There will be two, two, there will be two three-bedroom homes and three two-bedroom homes. On February, I'm sorry, on September 9th, 2024, the select board as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund approved funding in the amount of $650,000 for construction of the five deed-restricted homes. On January 21st of this year, the trust submitted an application to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund requesting funding in the amount of $25,000 for pre-development costs. On February 26th of this year, the trust met with the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group, which gave a favorable recommendation to my office. And on March 13th, the town manager at its office sent a memorandum to the Community Preservation Committee with positive recommendation. And the CPC met on March 27th and gave their positive recommendation to the select board as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. And I believe Ms. Moynihan is ready to give her presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Renshaw. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am Laura Moynihan. For the record, I am the executive director and in-house counsel for the Falmouth Housing Trust. Just a brief overview, although I see you're about 20 minutes ahead of schedule, so does that mean I get an extra 20 minutes, Madam Chair?
No way. No way. That's not strong. Go ahead, take your time.
Anyway, so just briefly, to refresh your memory, this parcel was acquired.
Hold on one second. Do we have an issue? Go right ahead. Thank you. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Parcel was acquired originally by the 300 Committee in 2024 for open space and affordable housing. It was divided so that 1.1 acres was made available for housing and 2.7 acres for open space. And the DCR acquired the 2.7 acres closest to the pond for open space preservation. That'll be managed by Webner. And the housing trust acquired the one acre closest to the road. And Webner does plan to develop a trail system to connect the other green parcels that you see for the public. We have now been through the zoning board and have received our comprehensive permit, and we are starting the road work this week. So the site clearing has been done. We have building permit applications in. This is the color plan showing the location of the five homes. We've tried to develop, develop the village setting running east to west along Oquaid Highway with traditional New England architecture. Our buildings will be solar and EV-ready. And the visitability features requested by the working group will be incorporated wider doorways on the first floor for handicapped accessibility, as well as the first-floor bathrooms. This is a rendering of what is now going to be called Bigelow Landing Road. So there are the four homes running along Oquaid Highway. And then you can see one home tucked in the back. Clancy Construction will be doing the work for us as general contractor. And we have a tiered affordability for the project. So two homes at 80%, one at 100%, and two homes at 120% AMI. And this is just a picture of the construction that Clancy does on some of our other homes, which will be similar here. The sale prices you'll see here for the two-bedroom, the three-bedroom, at 80% AMI. And then the 100% AMI two-bedroom, and then the 120% AMI two-bedroom and three-bedroom home, obviously well below the current median sales price in town at about $800,000. So this is workforce housing. It's middle-income housing. You're really looking at families that are in the $90,000 to $150,000 income range per household typically, roughly. So our pre-development costs were hefty. We had about $62,000 in engineering and survey. We had to do some environmental testing and remediation on the existing dwelling because it contained lead and asbestos. So in order to demolish it, we had to have a full evaluation of the building. And then we had to demolish it. So you see another $26,000 there in the demo costs. So the total pre-development costs were $107,000. We are looking at a $2.97 million budget. Between the land acquisition, which the Affordable Housing Fund graciously gave us the funds for that, the building and structural and the soft costs, we get to almost $3 million for five homes. So very expensive undertaking with the construction now. Since October, when we had our last specs and bids come in due to the rise in construction costs, the costs went up about 5% to 7% with the more recent specs. So our budget went up. We're also dealing with interest rates close to 7% on construction financing. So, very expensive. The engineering and survey has been more than we originally anticipated. We were required to make numerous changes through the zoning board process, so that upped our engineering and survey costs. And we ended up designing to subdivision standards, which was also much more expensive than putting in a driveway. But those requests were made by the town to have an actual subdivision road in there, and we honored that request. We also were voluntarily upgraded the septic systems to the nitro advanced treatment systems in connection with our collaboration with the 300 Committee. The 300 Committee donated $125,000 to that effort. That cost for those systems is about $200,000 for the five homes. So, again, another cost added to the project, but we're happy to do it. We understand that housing and open space and water resource protection all need to go hand-in-hand in Falmouth. So we have a philanthropy fundraising number of $590,000. We're not quite there yet. This $25,000 will help us a great deal to offset some of those costs. So that's why we're here, asking you for that.
Questions from the board? I'll just make two comments. One, I'm really happy to hear about connecting the water to housing. I don't think you can talk about one without the other.
Agreed.
And the second piece I will commend you on is the visitability, because that has been an issue. And I'm very happy to hear that all of the units will have that as well. Ms. Goldstone, and then Mr. Muscally?
Oh, I believe, Ms. Muscally. Go ahead. My question is actually for Ms. Fish, so if you have a question first.
So, so it's gonna be a town road?
Yes.
So, will there be any other expenses that the homeowners will? Is it a homeowners' association? Will there be a monthly charge or?
There'll be a homeowners' association. You know, in designing this development, we have to always think carefully about HOA fees because we want our buyers to be able to be qualified for mortgages. So we will create an HOA because there will be operation and maintenance for the septic systems. The housing trust is going to fund the first three years, I believe it is, of the inspection costs for the homeowners because it's not something that we want to saddle the homeowners with as soon as they acquire these houses. These nitro systems have received provisional approval from the DEP, so they require testing and inspection four times a year. So we're going to create the homeowners' association. We're going to fund it with probably $10,000 to $15,000 to fund the O and M for the homeowners for the first few years. This technology is expected to get general approval this year, so that O and M might go down to two years. But the Board of Health requires two years of quarterly inspections in any event. So, that's the long answer. The short answer is that there will be a nominal HOA fee. We're estimating maybe $100 a year for the homeowners to put into the HOA to just cover things like maybe landscaping at the entrance or something like that. But otherwise, they will be responsible all for their own expenses.
And truss will be by the town as well?
Plowing and trash by the town. We had to design the road to the requirements of the DPW engineering in order to have them agree to plow it. So that was additional engineering costs there.
Well, thank you. And anticipated my questions as to the impact of those HOAs. We've seen some instances where some of the purchasers in affordable housing developments have been surprised with the increase in their monthly maintenance charges. So I appreciate what the housing trust is doing to keep that reasonable, and that's really good of you to do.
Yeah, I mean, we have the benefit of doing approvals for eligible buyers, so we know what buyers can get approved for and what they can't get approved for. And there's, the one thing you cannot do is impose an HOA or a condo fee that's, you know, realistically above, you know, $100 or $150 a month because they won't get qualified for mortgages. So you always have to think about, in planning these developments, you know, how are the affordable homes gonna pay an HOA fee in order to be able to afford to buy the home? So we sort of try to preempt those problems down the road.
And pre-development costs, have we done that before? We have, right?
We have, several times, yes.
Several times, right.
Ms. Goldstone?
Yep, thank you. And I'll preface my question for Ms. Fish by saying, I love this project. I think, I love the partnerships between the 300 Committee and Falmouth Housing Trust. I think that's a really great partnership, helping advance multiple of the town's goals. And everything that you've just shared shows real thoughtfulness about our housing needs, our environmental needs, the community's whole needs. That said, I guess I'm just looking for a little reassurance from our housing coordinator, given what we've already invested in this project, given our limited Affordable Housing Fund monies and the need to be creating 80 units of housing per year, that this is really the best use of that $25,000 that we could be drawing from our Affordable Housing Fund.
We had, for the record, I'm Kim Fish, the housing coordinator. In the early days, when we discussed the $25,000 pre-development costs, we had an applicant, and the working group was hesitant to recommend it to town manager to recommend to you because it's usually very early in the stages of the project where you don't know where it's gonna go, and it's a grant. It's not a, no interest loan, there's no mortgage, we're just giving it. We were hesitant, but we did grant it, and then we revised the policy and granted it to another project. But when we were discussing it, and when we presented it to the board, it was really on a case-by-case basis, really looking at what's coming down the pike with other projects. Is this project shovel-ready? How far along is it? What the benefit of the town? Is it nonprofit, for-profit? And this is really a good project, and they put the IA system in. Their costs had increased so significantly along the way that the working group really felt that this is one of those projects that we, I mean, we really, this is one of those projects that absolutely, it's worth that $25,000. And we see how much they've already spent. It's not early on, so we have the benefit of seeing. It's not early on, so we have the benefit of seeing what their pre-development costs are, where in other projects, we may not have that. And we can, their pre-development costs had increased significantly, especially tearing down that other home that was already there. So, and we do have the funds in the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Brown, did you have a question?
I would just comment that I do think it's a great project, too, and I'm thankful that you only asked for twenty-five thousand when all your costs have gone up so significantly. So thanks for your good work.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Certainly echo what others have said. It's a great project, good collaboration between the Three Hundred Committee, the Housing Trust, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as well. So very good project. I support it.
Madam Chair, I move that the board, acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, grant twenty-five thousand dollars to Falmouth Housing Trust for the pre-development costs for the housing project located at four nineteen Wacoit Highway, and authorize the town manager to execute the documents setting forth the financial award to Falmouth Housing Trust.
I'd second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much, and for all your support. And if I could take two seconds to give a little plug for the starter home bylaw, because this is a perfect example of where the starter home bylaw could be of such great benefit. Four units per acre in a village setting. If there was a bylaw in place, this project could be, you'd have building permits in two months. And a lot of these costs that we incur in the housing world, the costs go up and up and up because of the time it takes to get the permits, which in this case was over a year. So just to plug how important we feel that starter home bylaw is for the town to be considering, and hope that the select board will support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to move on to a presentation and a discussion regarding the establishment of a cultural district. Welcome. Come on up.
Sure.
Oh, and I'd like to thank Ms. Fish as well. She's.
Always.
Can you all hear me?
Speak right in, please, and introduce yourself.
All right. Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
Perfect.
Well, thank you so much for your time. There's many people from the cultural council here, and I just want to acknowledge them, especially Eileen Carnow and George Shar, who has worked with me for a year getting this information. Also Nikki Engstrom, Ocean Eversley, and Sarah Ann Glover. So that's how much people are really invested in this.
Don't forget to tell us your name.
Pardon me?
Don't forget to tell us your name.
Don't forget. Oh, yes, I always say I'm Alice Kuchimba. I'm the current chair of the Falmouth Cultural Council, which acknowledges that a lot of people helped for many, many years. In fact, it's the forty-fifth anniversary of the local cultural councils. I'm going to go zippity-dooda through this slideshow to give you plenty of time to ask me questions. This is our mission statement, and as you see, to foster rich cultural life and contribute to the economic vitality of our community, they are, as this will show, highly correlated. The more you invest in a rich cultural life, the more economic payback you get. This is just a place saver. This is what we're here to talk about, cultural districts for Falmouth Village and Woods Hole. That's the ideal. And I just want to say, we've done for a year, we have talked to each cultural district on the Cape and Islands. There are ten cultural districts, and on the Cape, it's six towns. We either met with them in person or by phone, or gotten feedback in writing. We've also worked with Caroline Cole from Mass Cultural Council, and she's moving to a new position there. And so we've also gotten feedback about what the future's going to be. You have time to discuss this. This is not something that we want a decision necessarily tonight. It would be great, but the portal will reopen on July first, and we just want to give you as much information as you need to, you know, consider this initiative. The purpose of a cultural district initially is to shine a spotlight on the arts and culture. And you may not know these two gentlemen. One is Zig, or the Zig, the Z Y G eight oh eight, and his father, Malim Dafunki Professor. And they are going to be performing at Arts Alive, and they're going to do individual programs. So one of the things I want to spend a little time on is this statistic. This is from Mass Cultural Council. Our full-time artists do not make a livable wage. In general, they make forty-two thousand versus fifty-eight thousand. That is the livable wage in Massachusetts. This is from the federal census. George Shar, who's a musician, did a little more background research, and he tells me that musicians like the Z Y G eight oh eight, they only make twenty-nine thousand a year. So if we can do more to promote the arts, it will really help our individual artists as well as our nonprofits. So the second thing that we're going to spend more time about is how cultural districts increase economic vitality by marketing to cultural tourists. And this is, I know you have all this information, which I did send by email. Thank you, Peter. And this is the economic impact. This is from the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce. It's a study in 2023 that direct visitor spending is two point seven billion. Local tax revenue for Barnstable County is eighty-eight million. I asked the chamber if they had it for Falmouth. They don't. They said I should ask the town. So maybe you all know how much arts and culture gives back to the town. We know it's a lot, but we don't have the exact number. What I want to say is, when people attend a cultural event, they often make an outing out of it. So in addition to what they spend, let's say, going to a college light opera, musical, they'll go to a restaurant. If they're from out of town, they may stay overnight. So some of these categories are not discrete. They overlap. So the thing that I want to also, this is the piece of paper, Peter. I took a photo of this, and it didn't come out exactly as I wanted it to. What we are missing, because we don't have cultural districts in Falmouth, is visit masses from the Massachusetts Department of Travel and Tourism. Every place you go, this is from the North Shore, it will say, this is, you know, are you looking for culture? And if it was Cape Cod, it would be the other six towns who have cultural districts, and we're not listed. So I'm just saying, if we could do this, we would get more attention to our local cultural assets, which we have many of. All right, I looked for an image that would give you a visual of what Mass Cultural Council tells us, is that ninety-one percent of cultural districts report a thirteen-hundred percent increase in visits, and two hundred and forty new businesses have opened. So, you know, I said that musicians make twenty-nine thousand, dancers make seven thousand seven hundred dollars on average, and they are below the poverty line. So I think if anybody could do this, they should make a whole lot more money. This is just another piece of information I want you to consider. The AEP six study is the most robust study of economics. It means Arts and Economic Progress Study, and this is for Hamden County. I asked Mass Cultural Council, what's the most rigorous study that you have? And they said, this is it. And as you'll see, seventy-seven percent of out-of-town visitors come to town specifically for a cultural event, and sixty-four percent of the non-locals and fifty-one percent of the locals report that the purpose of their trip was specifically tied to a cultural event. They would have gone elsewhere, or they would not have come if it wasn't for the cultural event. And this is the sixty dollars and thirty-eight dollars. That's additional money that they spend in addition to whatever the admission is for the cultural event. So again, it benefits Main Street businesses, it benefits our restaurants, it benefits everybody. So this is where I want to linger, an action plan. And this is where I want to sort of pull back a little bit and just tell you what this is from, is the Mass Cultural Council. We have met with Mike Renshaw on February twentieth, and I checked it off, Mike, that we had support from the town manager's office. And we can continue to talk about how to actually implement this, because that wasn't decided, but you had all the information, as well as some key points about what we've learned. The next step would be a commitment from the select board with a resolution, and I gave you a sample resolution. Again, you don't have to do anything but think about it, because we really need to start to implement this once you're on board. The next step, once you're on board, is community input meetings. What we've learned from the Mass Cultural Council, their advice is, use the time that you have to engage and educate the community about developing cultural districts. Use meetings to assess which community members, like two artists who live or work in the district. And what we've talked about, Eileen and George and I, is really not having it be a top-down model, to really have people really think it through together, who they think would be good working partners in a partnership. You have to have a partnership agreement before you do the application, and you can't apply until the portal is open. And these applications are at least thirty-three pages long, which is why it's above my pay grade, and I really think that I'm asking the town to consider how to both apply and to manage cultural districts, which I think would really help our arts community. The only other thing I'm going to say, because there is one more slide, but I'll say it now, is everything we've learned from the six Cape towns is do not rely so long on volunteers. And I say that as a very committed volunteer, that you really want to invest in ideally a full-time director of cultural affairs. Barnstable started out with a part-time one in one district, and then they went to a full-time coordinator. Harwich, the latest, has two districts and a full-time coordinator. That's it. So we have, Eileen and George, do you have questions for us or comments?
Questions or comments? Mr. Brown?
I was able to attend a virtual meeting with the Mass Cultural Council with Alice and some other folks, and we preliminarily discussed where a cultural district might be, and how big could it be, and what type of limitations there are. And the director said, you know, you design your own, and we'll see if we approve it. But there's no real model or definition of where it could be. So I threw out, maybe it could be all the way from the Falmouth Art Center up to Highfield Hall.
Yes, and even perhaps include FCTV, which is just around the corner.
Maybe, yeah.
It has to be navigable, not walkable. And since there's a bike path from Falmouth Village down to Woods Hole, you would then, that's what Harwich does, they have a rail trail, then you can connect them.
Mm-hmm. So.
Ms. Goldstone?
Related to that, when I think about our cultural resources and assets here in Falmouth, so many of them are outside of that district, whether it's the Navigator, the Portuguese Club, the Cape, like, there's the agricultural history, there's just a lot of cultural resources that aren't right in downtown. And so I'm curious how you would think about with a, even if it's an expansive definition of downtown, a downtown cultural district, and really bringing all of Falmouth's cultural resources to bear with that.
That's a really good question. I went to Wellfleet. They have done something with their website called In the Loop, which would be sort of like our village, and they have Out of the Loop. So they can put assets, but it wouldn't be technically part of the district, but you could promote everything. And what they have also, they have a coordinator that's paid out of their allotment from Mass Cultural Council, and everybody says, if Kevin leaves, what are we going to do? So that's why I'm saying a town employee would help. But there is a way to at least be inclusive of people who are outside the footprint, although they are not part of the cultural district, which is still a footprint.
Mr. Muscally?
In order for us to proceed, would we need to know who the third-party manager would be? Have you had any discussions with anyone?
No, we come to you first, always first. Second, actually, after Mike. All I can say is, you don't have to have a third party. You can manage it yourself. But if you have a third party, then you need a memorandum of understanding. I think it was Beverly, no, it was Lennox, who had a third party. But it depends on your vision and your commitment to say this is something that requires some investment from the town.
So reading between the lines, it seems like you would prefer there not necessarily be a third-party manager, but that the town undertake this responsibility itself.
Yes. I also think it would help coordinate between the cultural council and the cultural district.
So, and that was going to be a question of mine as well. Do you see any impact, negative or positive, on the cultural council if we adopt a cultural district?
Again, that's a really good question. I think that, for example, Provincetown, and I believe it's also Orleans, they have the cultural council do double duty. I think that's unrealistic. I think we're doing so much right now with really expanding the grants, deepening the pool of applicants, developing our own program with music at the table. I think that's an overreach, but I think a coordination, that you could have a meeting that was, you know, like a liaison between the two, and that there would be a continuous flow of information, I think that would be useful. The difference between a cultural council and a cultural district, a cultural council is really to manage the grant program from the Mass Cultural Council, and the district is really about projects and promotion. Right now, the cultural council is doing a whole lot of promotion. It would be great to have somebody who's a paid person who would do some of the marketing that we're doing ourselves.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Creating the district provides more opportunities for more grants from the Mass Cultural Council.
Correct.
So it could increase our allotment.
Ms. Goldstone?
One number I didn't see in your very thorough presentation is essentially a ratio of the opportunities for greater funding compared to the investment that we would be making to pay for a staff member, or, you know, as you said, one of the things that came through loud and clear from the other towns is that this requires resourcing. So what's that ratio of required resources to what it opens up for us?
I think the best data comes from Harwich, where she is a full-time member. She raises thirty to forty thousand dollars, and they repurpose their middle school into artist studios, because they couldn't do affordable housing, because of wastewater, so there's a whole bunch of reasons. But basically, they raise enough money to support themselves. Part of that is because they have the artist studios, and because she's a town employee, she helps raise money for what would be their human, their counseling center. Is it going to be total? I can't say for sure what Falmouth would be, but when you think about what we have to offer, our assets, everybody has also said, basically, it's a no-brainer. Falmouth should have cultural districts. There's no way you wouldn't. You have the assets, and you should have them in two places.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right. And we hope you'll ask us back so that you can do the resolution, and we can all applaud their counseling center. Is it going to be total? I, I can't say for sure what Falmouth would be. But when you think about what we have to offer, our assets, everybody has also said, basically, it's a no-brainer, Falmouth should have cultural districts, there's no way you wouldn't. You have the assets, and you should have them in two places.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right. And you, we hope you'll ask us back so that you can do the resolution, and we can all applaud you.
Hey.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to a discussion of the statement from the DEIB, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee. And I believe our chair is here. Can you introduce yourself?
Yeah. I sent a PowerPoint over, I don't know if I signed it in time. If not, I'm just going to read it.
You did not send it in time.
Okay.
And it's the, it's the statement, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Settle down, Peter.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. My name is Manan Zudranasen. I'm the Chair of the Town Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. And I'm here tonight with a strong support of our committee members, Melanie Kyoto, Vice Chair, Dr. Amy Bauer, Secretary, Jim Newman, very freshly appointed to the board as of an hour ago, and our liaison as well, Susan Lumpin. And we're here tonight to present a statement of the DEIB Advisory Committee to the Select Again, I apologize, I didn't send the PowerPoint in time, so I'm just going to read it. During this extraordinary, unprecedented times, our shared values of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging are facing also unprecedented challenges. National effort to dismantle DEI programs threaten the progress we have made as a town. But we must remain steadfast in our commitment to fostering a welcoming and inclusive community for all. First and foremost, we acknowledge and appreciate the actions that the Select Board has already taken to uphold these values. For instance, the recent workshop on Saturday, March first, addressing immigration issues, is just one of the examples of the town's dedication to inclusivity. We recognize the effort that has gone into making Falmouth a place where all residents, regardless of background, feel valued and safe. And we urge the Select Board to continually adhere to this commitment. Standing with vulnerable communities, we are very acutely aware that immigrant communities, LGBTQ+ individuals, people with diverse religious backgrounds, those with disabilities, other underrepresented groups are increasingly under threat. We commend the town's efforts to support these populations and ask that protections remain steadfast. Now is not the time to retreat from our principles, but rather to reaffirm them. Our ask tonight, we respectfully urge the Select Board to reaffirm its commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging in all decision-making processes. We ask the town to continue to actively support the dignity and rights of our residents, ensuring their voices are heard and their contributions valued. As a committee, we remain committed to our mission, and we continue to advocate for policies and initiatives that strengthen our community. With that, I'm going to quote and reaffirm our mission. The Falmouth Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Advisory Committee promotes an equitable, just, and welcoming environment in Falmouth where all feel included and respected. We review town policies, procedures, and programs through a DEIB lens, and make recommendations for improvement to the Select Board. We proactively engage with Falmouth Town Government, community partners, school districts, residents, and visitors to achieve this goal. We welcome all to share any DEIB-related concerns with the committee, and we suggest resources and support as needed. We are committed to fostering a safe and respectful space where all are welcome, to exchange ideas, share information, participate in making Falmouth a community that recognizes and embraces the inherent worth and dignity of all people. In conclusion, Falmouth has worked hard to become a town where everyone belongs. This is not a time to step back. We stand ready to support the Select Board in maintaining and strengthening this commitment, ensuring that Falmouth remains a place where all people are welcomed, valued, and respected. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Goldstone?
First of all, I want to thank the DEIB Committee for your work and for this statement. I wholeheartedly agree that it is not time to step back from protecting the most vulnerable in our community and continuing to make Falmouth a place where more and more of our residents feel truly welcome and, and included. As someone who does communications work professionally, it might seem surprising that I sometimes question the value of making a statement, particularly in a forum like this, where a very small portion of our town will actually see or hear that statement. And that's not to say that it's not important to do, but I guess, I wonder what we can do to, to go further. One very small idea that, that as I was reading this, I was thinking about is, are there opportunities for signage in our town buildings or around town? Are there other ways to get this message out to our residents and to those who visit our town, that we are a welcoming and an inclusive town? And so maybe that's something that the, the committee can consider, and others can, can provide ideas for how we make this, this message truly visible to, to all of our residents and visitors.
Any other comments? Mr. Brown?
Well, you know what, we can fold it into our 250th celebration as well. I don't know if a lot of people know that Falmouth was a haven for Quakers. Quakers were shunned in a lot of towns way back in the early days, and they found refuge in Falmouth, a lot in West Falmouth, and that's why we still have, you know, a lot of history over there that relates to the Quakers. And, you know, I'm very proud of Falmouth's history of always being inclusive, so I think we just keep doing what we're doing, and it's good to make a statement that we're not going to change our ways just because there's a nationwide wave of it. We're a town that has its own principles.
Are we being asked to do anything specifically right now, or this is really just for informational purposes at this point?
I don't believe we're being asked to do anything. I think this was brought to us to put it out there and to reaffirm our commitment to what you're asking.
That's correct. And thank you for both of your comments. And we reappreciate the, the Select Board's support and the town's support.
And I think it's interesting that we had this right after our Cultural Council presentation, because they are not exclusive. And I think it's just another way, to your point, to weave it into somewhere else in our community, and to continue to weave it into other committees if we really want to show that we are what you're asking us to be as a town.
And I, to Doug's comment, it was very notable yesterday that during the Lanterns and Lyrics 250th anniversary event, the committee had made great efforts to ensure that the scripts that were read about different phases of history included the contributions of Black and Wampanoag members of the Falmouth community during the Revolutionary War, during the War of 1812. And that the event at the end transitioned, well, at the end of the Lanterns and Lyrics part, transitioned from the conquered militia fife and drum band to a Cape Verdean jazz duo, really highlighting the ongoing contributions of the Cape Verdean community to Falmouth. So I think we are seeing that, to your point, that, that integration of a lot of different aspects of Falmouth history and culture.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we appreciate your support, and thank you for those comments. We have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move, Mr. Renshaw, I'm going to ask you to kick this one off for the Fast Signs Cape Cod for variance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fast Signs Cape Cod submitted an application on behalf of the property owner, Green Pond Holdings LLC, for a sign permit back on February nineteenth of this year. A copy of that application is attached to your package this evening. The sign for which the variance is requested, which is located on the right side of the Haven Marina Building, is not illuminated. And Madam Chair and Select Board members, you have copies of the facade of the building with the, with the sign in question illustrated. According to the applicant, the logo sign dimensions exceed the permissible height dimension of thirty-six inches, as the three pieces, two of which are twenty-four inches and one of which is seven inches, total fifty-five inches in height. The logo is a combination of anchor and helm, which you can see from the illustration in your packet. According to the applicant, the building on which the sign and logo is to be mounted is set back from the roadway over seventy-five feet. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to the applicant, who can answer any questions you might have.
Good evening. My name's Mark Conley. I own Fast Signs Cape Cod. Fast Signs is basically eight hundred independently-owned and operated franchisees across the country, just to give you a little bit foresight about that. We're located at forty Evergreen Circle in Mashpee, owned by Cape Cod Coffee. And so, as was stated already, we've been working on this project. The building is set back. The Haven Marina side is thirty-six inches high, which is in compliance. The logo is, we feel is very aesthetically pleasing to the area, being a marina. So it was designed in the sense of having a helm and an anchor. And as was pointed out already, the top piece of them are seven inches, the, almost look like the eyes on the top of an anchor. So that added a little bit of dimension. But it's not illuminated. I, you know, it's a half-inch acrylic, but you need to be able to see it, so it needed to be a little bit bigger because the building is so set back. So we're asking for a variance and approval, because it is kind of a, an aesthetically pleasing look, number one. Number two, it's a very small piece, so it doesn't, you know, it's not, you know, it doesn't interfere with the area or any of the butters, or it's just a, it's just a very nice-looking, you know, artistic piece that we feel will really look nice on the building as opposed to a blank surface on the building with a garage door on the top. So it's going to make it look a little nicer.
Questions from the board. Mr. Brown?
Is the actual, are the actual signs, as depicted, just actually letters mounted on the siding with no backing?
Yeah, basically, they're stud, the letters are stud-mounted, so all you see is the letters.
Okay.
And again, I'm just going to repeat it, that it's not illuminated.
It's not illuminated.
That's really important.
You know, it's just a, just a piece.
Yep.
You can see the, on the top of the building, they do have some lights, but, you know, that's the only light surface that, and that light is existing.
You won't turn them on, right?
I don't turn them on.
Questions from the board? Ms. Goldstone?
I think it's a very aesthetically pleasing and proportional, you know, it's outside the, the measurements, but by eye, it looks, it looks very fitting.
It almost looks like it's always been that, right? When you look at it.
Yeah. I mean, from the street, you're not really going to tell.
Right.
That it's a little bit larger.
So I would move approval of the variance for Fast Signs Cape Cod. Approve, wait. Approve the variance for a variance. Reading from the script here. Move, approve the application from Fast Signs Cape Cod for a variance to sign code 184-18C, measurement of sign area for Haven Marina, 366 Menot Road, East Falmouth, as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you.
Anybody ever needs any signs, give us a call. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Renshaw, consider the request from the John Wesley United Methodist Church for a waiver or reduction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant, the church, is requesting, as you mentioned, a reduction of the permit fees associated with this event, similar to the reduction that's been provided over the course of the past nine years by the Select Board. You, you see in your packet a copy of the fee schedule. The staff and the Select Board office calculated what the normal fee would have been, and then applied this, this reduction to result in a $262.50 reduced permit fee. And as I mentioned earlier, over the course of the past nine years, Select Board has voted each year to reduce the special event permit fee, the church pays for the, for this event, to the $262.50 per that formula. And Madam Chair and Select Board, it's my recommendation that the Select Board approve this fee reduction request, as it has done the past nine years. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm not sure if the applicant is here tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And I believe that they were not able, I think they notified your office very late this afternoon, because I did receive an email from Diane Davidson, that they were unable to be here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a note to remind myself to say that. They did notify us late in the afternoon.
Questions from the board? Comments from the board?
Consistent with what we've done in the past, quite reasonable, so I would support it and make the motion that we grant the waiver of the special permit fee for the Sunday Beach Services on Sundays from 7:00, 6:25 to 8:00, 3:25, except 7:13 and 8:17, as presented.
I believe that's 8:31.
It may be. It says 8:03 here, but...
It's 8:31 in the comments.
On the agenda, it's 8:31, so, okay.
And you're going to waive, waive it to the reduced amount of 262.50?
262.50, as presented, yeah.
Okay. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Mr. Muscally, you vote, did you vote? Thank you. It's unanimous. No, I figured as much, because you made the motion, but I didn't see it. Okay, we're going to move to Mr. Renshaw, second-hand dealer license renewal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Select Board is being requested to consider approval of the second-hand license, second-hand dealer license renewal for Cape Cod Gold and Silver Coin, which is located at 424 Main Street in Falmouth. The application is to approve a request to renew second-hand dealer license. The Select Board office staff advised that in discussions with the applicant, the applicant had a health issue, pretty significant, serious health issue, which made it difficult for him to submit the application materials in a timely fashion. Cape Cod Gold and Silver Coin has been licensed as a second-hand dealer at 424 Main Street, Falmouth, for more than fifteen years. Madam Chair and Select Board, it's my recommendation that Select Board vote to approve the second-hand dealer license renewal of Cape Cod Gold and Silver Coin, as presented.
Questions from the board?
Administrative matter for a longstanding business, I move approval of the application for renewal of the second-hand dealer license for Cape Cod Gold and Silver Coin, as presented.
I'll second Ms. Goldstone's motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you. And before we get to the consent agenda, I see that Mr. McCaffrey is here. So I would ask the board to allow him to be interviewed. Yes, please.
Certainly.
Mr. McCaffrey, please come up to the podium. And is there anything about you, A, that we don't know? And B, that you did not put in your application that you would like the board to know?
No, I did mention that I do participate in Airbnb and have, for fourteen years, the form in which I participate is I rent for short-term. I don't allow weekly rentals. I mainly get one and two nights transient visitors to town. It's in my home. I don't rent when I'm not there, and I provide them breakfast. I am actually approved under the zoning law as a boarding or rooming house, so, in my district. But what has my participation in Airbnb resulted is that I've followed the business and all of the controversies and positive and negative things about the short-term rental industry. So I'm well aware of that. That, combined with my professional experience, having drafted numerous local regulations associated with land use and development, will help me contribute. And I think my commitment to the character of the town and preserving that is evidenced by the many committees and boards I've participated in. It's a complex issue. The perceived negatives of disruptive behavior in residential districts and distortion of the housing market by some of the short-term rentals are issues that we need to address. of the short-term rentals are issues that we need to address. We may have some regulations in place. I think it may come down to be primarily a zoning issue. But we need to understand clearly what we need to regulate, and we will need to regulate this. And yet, the history of the town has welcoming to transient visitors. In the past, we had many rooming houses. A hundred years ago, we had hotels. Summer residents have typically often rented their home for a few weeks out of their, out of the season. Those are valuable aspects of the town's economy and, and culture that need to be preserved. But some aspects of short-term rental do have a negative effect, and we must address those in a very targeted way.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Mr. McCaffrey?
No, I think that was a very good explanation of his position, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so we're back to...
Sorry, I missed, I wasn't aware of the meeting. I got a call that you were doing it, so.
So we are back to looking to appoint two members. We talked about Mr. Gesson, who cannot be here tonight and cannot be here on the fifth. So what would the board, how would the board like to move forward? We, we interviewed Mr. McCaffrey, Mr. Crane, Ms. Klein, and Ms. McKeon. How would the board like to proceed?
If we were to appoint the two...
At-large.
At-large members tonight, and we would still be waiting for a Realtor to fill that one role that we've identified. So we wouldn't constitute the committee tonight, but at least we'd make some progress.
Yes. Good point. How would the board like to move forward? Would you like to vote the two at-large members this evening?
Well, I would not be, I wouldn't have a problem with that, because my two picks would be the two people that I feel like were the most active during the process of the previous working group. That would be Mr. Crane and Ms. Klein. That would be my position. Although, we've got all of these good candidates, but they were the most active and contributed the most.
Okay. Any other comments?
I support Mr. Brown's premise on that.
I, I definitely, I think that the, in addition to, to her involvement in that previous process, that the, the research that Ms. Klein has been doing and the connections that she's been fostering would be very, very valuable for this committee moving forward. As others have said, I think we have a number of really qualified candidates and some really important, different perspectives that could be brought to this work between Ms. McKeon's experience as a renter, Mr. McCaffrey's experience with writing regulations, and also as a really old-school Airbnb host. Love that he's actually there when he provides them breakfast and probably a masterclass in something with breakfast. And then Mr. Crane's experience, both his family's experience with short-term rentals, and his experience with the process and with the town to date. I think there's, there's, it's, it's a difficult choice.
We might need a bigger committee.
But I'm hearing the name Elizabeth Klein. I've heard it from three different people now. So why don't we do one at a time, perhaps? Would you like to motion to approve?
I would be thrilled to nominate Liz Klein for the Short-Term Rental Advisory Committee.
I would second that.
We all second that.
So we have a motion and a second to appoint Elizabeth Klein. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, there's one.
Okay, I'm going to, I'll jump in, because I haven't had an opportunity, if I may, Madam Chair.
Of course, of course.
But as was pointed out about before, Mr. Crane has been involved since the very beginning with respect to this question. He had submitted detailed information with respect to the town meeting, I think, that, that discussed this a while ago, back in November. And I feel that he would be a, a good addition to the, to the committee, and I would support his nomination as well.
Motion?
I'm going to take it as a motion.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
No, no.
Okay, but it's three to two, so that carries, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we have appointed Mr. Crane and Ms. Klein.
But following along on what Mr. Brown said, I think we, you know, as we go forward, we may want to consider the possibility of, of increasing the, the committee. It may get a little unworkable if it's too many people. I'm just saying, we may want to consider it.
I think what I, I'd like to get that recommendation from the board, as they're doing their work. I, I agree that it, we could look at it, but I'd like to hear from them, and if they feel like they need additional control. That would be my suggestion.
I was also really heartened to hear multiple applicants say that even if they didn't get the position, they would be deeply involved.
Ms. McKeon is in particular.
Yes, Ms. McKeon said that, and, and Mr. McCaffrey, I hope that you'll also be involved in the process.
And with the working group model previously, that input was well taken and was incorporated.
It's a very collaborative effort.
Okay, so we have appointed our two at-large members, and we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I'll read each item on the consent agenda. If any board member would like to hold an item, please notify me as the chair. Licenses, consider the request from the Landfall Inc., doing business as Landfall Restaurant Nine, Luscombe Road, Luscombe Avenue, Woods Hole, to extend its seasonal all-alcoholic common victoria license until January two, twenty-twenty-six. Consider a vote to approve an application by the Mark Antonis Restaurant Group, Inc., located at one-seventeen Main Street, Falmouth, for a change of DBA for its all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license. Consider a vote to approve an application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Gray Matter Marketing, Cape Cod Brew Fest, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, twelve-twenty Nathan Ellis Highway, East Falmouth, Saturday, nine-twenty-twenty-five, from two PM to five-thirty PM. Consider a vote to approve an application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license, Lupus Foundation of New England, Cape Cod Food Truck and Craft Beer Festival, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, twelve-twenty Nathan Ellis Highway, East Falmouth, Saturday, eight-sixteen-twenty-five, from eleven AM to five PM. Consider a vote to approve three special one-day wine and malt licenses, Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society, four-oh-eight Carriage Shop Road in East Falmouth, Sunday, six-eight, from twelve PM to six PM, Saturday, six-twenty-eight, from four PM to ten PM, and Sunday, six-twenty-nine, from twelve PM to six PM, and Saturday, eight-sixteen-twenty-five, from two PM to ten PM. Consider a vote to approve a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for the West Falmouth Library Annual Garden Party, five-twenty-five West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, Saturday, six-fourteen, from six PM to eight PM. Consider a vote to approve a special one-day wine and malt beverage license for the West Falmouth Library Art Show opening, five-twenty-five West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, eight-thirteen-twenty-five, from five PM to eight PM. Administrative orders, approve the warrant for the annual town election, May twenty-twenty-five. Consider a vote to approve a request from the Master Gardener Association of Cape Cod for a variance to sign code one-eighty-four dash thirty, movable-portable A-Mobile signs, D-one-A, for the placement of five off-premise promotional signs for a plant sale at the Cape Cod Fairgrounds, five-seventeen-twenty-five. Consider a vote to amend the charge for the East Falmouth Library Building Advisory Committee. Thank you. Consider a vote to approve an intermunicipal agreement for the sale of surplus intermediate oyster seed from Falmouth to the town of Yarmouth. Consider a vote to authorize Marine Environmental Services to file a twenty-twenty-five Seaport Economic Council Grant Application.
Hold, please.
Consider a vote to appoint the Planning Board's nominee, Charlotte Harris, as its representative member to the Short-Term Rental Advisory Committee. Consider a vote to appoint the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce nominee, Peg Ekholm, to, as its representative member to the, of the Gulf Advisory Committee.
Madam Chair, I'll move the, the...
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, with the exception of Ms. Goldstone's calls.
Okay, we're going to hold item number three and number five. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to kick number three back to Ms. Goldstone.
So my understanding from the packet was part of the goal of this was to expand the membership, but as I read the amended draft, I don't think I saw a change in the membership numbers. I just wanted to clarify that.
That was the request, to go seven to nine.
That was the intent, and somehow this revision is, does not have that incorporated. So if we could amend the, the mission as presented, and in the second sentence, the committee shall consist of five members, and after the word "members," if we can insert "and one alternate," who shall serve until the committee is dissolved.
Could we send it back to the committee and have them resubmit it? I want to make sure that whatever they want is, is properly represented.
I, I certainly can. It was this board that actually made the change before the appointment, but happy to do that.
Would you send it back to them?
Sure.
Thank you. And number five, Ms. Goldstone.
I was just curious if we could get some more details on what the nature of the, the proposed renovation of the Harbor Masters Office and Marina Park is. It mentions evidence of, I guess, vulnerability to, to climate events, and I wasn't aware of that, of what those, those issues were, so it was just a matter of curiosity there.
So I don't have a lot of details. We can certainly reach out to Greg Fraser with MES and obtain some more details. As you all know, part of the, the improvements and renovations are to the Marina Office Building itself. I'll, I'll have to reach out. We can, Madam Chair, we can hold this until the next meeting, and we'll have some more information to report back.
Okay, is that going to impact any filing timelines? That's my only concern. Is this time-sensitive? I, I agree with...
Grants usually are, right?
Yeah, and that's what I'm worried about.
I don't recall, when they submitted the request to make this evening's agenda, I don't recall any time sensitivity. Let me try to pull up. It's a great question. Was it Christina that submitted this request?
Oh, maybe.
How would the board like to proceed? Do you want to wait for the information?
Unfortunately, Madam Chair, I can't, I can't find anything that indicates one way or the other with regards to time sensitivity. Most of these are sensitive. Typically, if there's a deadline, I ask that the department has put that in the, in the write-up in the summer, just to bring that to the board's attention. So we would have to report back.
And they're looking for this for the feasibility and schematic design of the Marina Park improvements, correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, total project budget of two-hundred thousand dollars, of which one-hundred-and-sixty thousand would be supported via the grants.
I'm just a little worried about waiting. My only concern.
Google the deadline.
Okay.
FY twenty-six Seaport Economic Council Grant Program Application Portal opens June one-twenty-five, with applications due June thirty. That's what I'm seeing.
It seemed to indicate there's no urgency.
That we can wait one week.
We, that's right. We've got a meeting May fifth.
Got a meeting next Monday, right?
Perfect. Okay, so...
The deadline's not this week.
Would the board like to hold, send three back to that committee, send this back to MES for more information, and bring it back? I think that's reasonable. Yeah, we can...
Totally, yes.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. We'll hold those. Thank you. Okay, well, let's review and vote to approve the minutes of the public sessions, March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and April seventh, twenty-twenty-five. And Mr. Muscally?
I was absent at both of those meetings, so I will abstain.
That's fine. You were.
Madam Chair, I, I move approval of the minutes of the meetings of public sessions, March twenty-four and April seven, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second Ms. Goldstone's motion, approve minutes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Town Manager's supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of important updates. I wanted to provide an update to the board and the community with regards to the Trotting Park Youth Baseball Fields. We met a couple of weeks ago with our LSP, License Site Professional, Arcatus, who is in the process of completing that more detailed investigation in regards to the test, drilling some test wells, to look at hydrology and water flow towards or not Long Pond. Part of the meeting, the focus of the meeting, however, was to schedule and coordinate with the LSP a community forum. We're tentatively, not tentatively, we've locked the data in May twenty-second, in the evening. I think we're looking at six-thirty start time, but that may change. But May twenty-second is the date we've reserved Lawrence School Auditorium for this public forum. Arcatus, the License Site Professional, Mr. Jim Lucre, and the individual who is responsible for preparing the, the risk assessment report, will be on hand to answer questions, very specific questions in regards to that risk assessment and the process. The DPW Director, Mr. McConerty, will also kind of give an, an outline overview of the timeline and act steps and action steps. But I wanted the, the board to know that May twenty-second is that date that we've identified for a public community forum.
Seven PM?
Six-thirty. I think it's six-thirty start time, and that may change. And if it does, we'll make sure we get the word out. And Peter McConerty, Peter Johnson Staub, the Assistant Town Manager, has been great updating the town's website. We have a couple of other documents that we're working to clear right now through the LSP, Arcatus, to post that information on the, on the website as well. And the second update, I'm going to turn over to the Assistant Town Manager. It's in regards to Green Pond Phase One Sewer, the Barrow, and some really great news that we received back from, is it MS?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so we got some good news. I'll just start. The Great Pond Sewer Service Area, the large project that Town Meeting just approved, sixty million dollars. It was, we've received the formal notice that the town has been included on what the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust calls the Intended Use Plan, which means that we have secured funding for the zero-to-two-percent interest loan, and we have to go through that application process to make sure it is a zero percent and not a two percent, and we continue to feel confident about that. There's no, no determination on that to this point, wasn't expected. But, so that, that was very much expected, that we got that news. The positive news is that the board will recall that there had been an announcement of a contemplated change in the funding whereby only the first fifty million dollars of a project would be guaranteed, and then the remaining, any remaining costs would have to compete for funding in subsequent years. And what we learned, and this was just after Town Meeting, is that the change that was contemplated has not been made. So the town's project being included this year is assured of funding, not only for the fifty million that we'll receive this year, but the remaining amount toward the entire project, and the superintendent's estimate is about an additional five million, will be eligible for state revolving fund, funding from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. So we won't have to worry about competing for that funding. And then there was one other piece that was identified in the notice, and that is, there is loan forgiveness beyond the low-interest loans that is based on a community's median income relative to the state median income. And Falmouth is, is in the ninety-five percent to one-hundred percent of state median income, so we're just below state median income, and as such, qualified for a loan forgiveness subsidy of three-point-three percent, which translates to a little over a million dollars. So some great news on the funding.
Really, really, really good news.
Will we be able to get this information out before the election? Because I think it'd be relevant with respect to the ballot question.
It's a really good point.
You know, so if we can certainly, with the assistance of the enterprise, and maybe get a press release out or something with respect to the, what we have, I think it'll be important for people to know that before the election.
We can work on that.
I think we should absolutely advertise that. I think you're a hundred percent correct.
Can I have a question? Did they rescind the entire plan to cap the funds, or just the ones that were in the queue?
So it is rescinded for all the projects approved this year and last year. Well, I guess last year was already guaranteed. So it's rescinded for now. Next year, new projects next year, they may still change the rule.
Have to work around it.
Yeah.
And I think that's equally as important to say, because it speaks to the timeliness of the vote. And I think that's equally as important to say, because it speaks to the timeliness of the vote.
Yep.
So, thank you. Absolutely. Okay, Select Board reports.
It's only been, not even a week since we've seen you.
Well, and then you're gonna see us again in another week. Ms. Goldstone?
Well, in addition to the, the Mass 250, or the 250th anniversary event, I was able to attend last Wednesday a really moving Holocaust remembrance event at Falmouth Jewish Congregation. The film that they showed was called Sabotage. It's a documentary that I believe is pretty widely available and is an incredible story of an uprising in the Auschwitz death camp and was really, like I said, very, very moving evening, and it was wonderful to see a lot of community members there and affirming the importance of understanding history. And to quote one of the, the people hosting it, "The importance of understanding what resistance requires of each of us."
Thank you.
Interesting.
Anything else? Mr. Zlinski?
I attended the CCMPO meeting again today, which was my calendar date, would be my last as a sitting board member. I didn't know if anybody had any interest in it, or I left some discussions on who we may have the time or desire to serve on that board, because we certainly don't want to lose the seat.
I have an interest in it. I can't guarantee that I'll be around today to attend.
Well, I'm gonna keep asking you then.
Okay.
So, so we, we can, we're hoping, we're hoping that on the 20th, Mr. Brown, and if not, it'll be Mr. Muscally.
Well, it could be a department head, too, but I think it would be more relevant to be able to have somebody on the board. It's, it never usually lasts any more than an hour and a half, and it's always on Zoom. And if you can't attend, if you have somebody to sit in for you, like an apartment head, or what, as long as they can make their quorum.
Yep.
I just encourage everybody to go to the website for the information, because so much information comes in in that one hour. It'd be hard to even do notes. You're better off watching the meeting back to get. I sent the town manager some, some crash statistics for Cape Cod, and it was pretty interesting today. Where our most dangerous intersections, you hear Mark Finnaman talk about, Brick Hill Road being one of those. And it was pretty, it was pretty informative, the map that they have and the work that they've done over the last five years of where the danger spots are. So stuff like that is important, and where the money's going and when it's coming. So.
We'll keep an eye on it.
I forgot. I guess apparently it was a busy week. I virtually attended part of one of the state's community engagement events around the Energy Facility Siting Board. Well, it looks like, or sounded like, some modifications since I had last looked at what they were proposing for the processes. So something I need to, to dig into more, certainly, and would encourage others to also take a look at that. It looks like some of the requirements for community engagement and the processes around that board may have been modified in, in large part in response to community feedback, looking to be more inclusive, so.
Yeah, the inclusivity part is good, but I don't like the part that it's constructive approvals. You know, because we saw ourselves how difficult communications and navigation can be with these large companies. And it's troubling that there would be a constructive approval even considered. So, such a big thing. So we'll see.
Mr. Muscally, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will so move.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.